He has no email.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, and I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to all members of council and to anyone watching on Facebook's. Motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the council, the township of North Glengarry, accept the agenda of the special meeting of council on Thursday, October 22, 2020. All those in favor? Motion is carried. I first just like to make an observation that in a recent email that we received from the Glengarry neighbors, that there was a line in there that said that council held a private meeting. I just want to say that we followed. We followed the proper procedural bylaw for announcing that meeting. It was last minute. We, we posted it on our website and the meeting was not private. The meeting was at the Glengarry Sports Palace and anybody could have seen it. Could we have done better to let the press know? Maybe, but at this point it was not a private meeting and it was not intentional to be that way. Okay, so we are going to move on to staff reports, building, planning and bylaw department clear cutting bylaw review. Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll be sharing my screen in just a moment. Okay. All right. Please let me know if you can see my screen now. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
If you can.
You can. Okay, excellent. So this is the comments council has received. This includes the GFA comments that were at the given at the meeting on September 17th. We also held subsequent agency meetings with the raison d'eregen Conservation Authorities, South Nation Conservation Authority and the CG counties transportation and planning departments. So all these comments are implemented within. So some of council has already returned some preliminary comments here as you will see it's within the columns. So we have the deputy mayor, Brendan Noble, Jeff Manley, that have returned the comments. So this might speed up this process here today. Okay, so the first item is on line three, as you will see here, is the title. So as you know, the title has been changed several times already. Since the beginning, we've had conservation bylaw, tree canopy bylaw. Now we have clear, clear cutting bylaw and then we've had other suggestions from the GFA. For example, land development bylaw. So I would like to get council's thoughts on the title. Should we be changing it? Is it appropriate, etc.?
Okay. Thank you, Kasia. I'm just gonna, Councilman Lee.
Um, yeah, I, I think we should leave it as clear, clear cut bylaw. I, I, I understand what, you know, the, the GFA has commented about land development bylaw, but that to me is too broad, too broad a topic. That's not what, that's not really that, what that bylaw does. We're not talking about land development. We're getting into now our development study that we had completed or whatever. I, I just don't know whether that's, that's the title we want to go with. If somebody can come up with a better one, but, but I, I'm okay with leaving it as is.
Okay, thank you, and I can't see everybody on screen, so if you have something and please put your hand up or just speak out. Anybody else have a comment on that or is everyone good with the clear cutting bylaw?
I'm good with it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, we'll leave as is.
Okay, I'm taking notes, so leave, leave as is, clear cutting bylaw for the title.
Okay, continue on to the next one.
Sure, okay, so we have number four here on the table, so first page, item four. So this refers to that item, complying with Bill 68, modernizing on terrorism municipal legislation. Act 2016 requiring all municipal to adopt and maintain policies to protect and enhance the tree canopy and natural vegetation within their jurisdiction. So the comment received here is the bylaw should be clear about what it is protecting. It seems to address only clear cutting permits without any measurable objectives for protecting and enhancing the tree canopy or long transacts to maintain a specific percentage of cover or to increase that cover to recommend the levels for sustaining healthy water, soil and air. I believe this bylaw would be stronger is measurable goals, if measurable goals were included. That's what they meant to write. Okay, so this one is recommending that the bylaw is more restrictive, but as I remember from many discussions that we had with council, this is, this bylaw is to control the nuisances associated with clear cutting and not necessarily protect the tree canopy cover. So thoughts from council?
Any members of council?
Yeah. Here. Thank you, yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, thi- this bylaw, I think we knew right from the start that it was going to be a bylaw that wasn't going to address every aspect with regards to forest cover. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is going to be a living document and, you know, and one that can be over time. It can be changed and improved and adjusted. But I think really what's critical right now that Kasia touched on is that there needs to be some, some regulation. And, and basically that's, I think the intention of this bylaw is to regulate clear cutting. Not to, not to enhance the tree canopy or things, things like that. It's also not intended to stop clear cutting either. So on each end of the spectrum, it's, it's not intended to be on either end of the spectrum, but very middle of the road, which I think we've accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Massey.
Yes, just on the same note, I noticed that like it was suggested that maybe a percentage of cover or like, like, like a bottom line or a minimum percentage of cover should be like a, an alert or a red flag that we should relook at this bylaw at the time. So would it, would it be a very, I, I know we don't have the surveys or we don't have the, the general estimation of the percentage of the tree cover, but is that something that we can add in there just like as a, as in the same line as this bylaw might, we looked at if the tree canopy drops below or we get the notice that it is below 25% or 30%, is that something that can be put in there or?
But I, I, I think that if that, if we got to that position and when we received that information, that that is something that we could consider at that time because as, as Deputy Mayor said, this is a living document.
Yes, okay.
I think, uh, Councilor Massey, that's something that definitely if we got to that point, you know, I think we have the largest tree canopy in SD and G at this point, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we don't stop at 10% and by the time we move on. Also, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
There, go ahead.
On this, on the second item, just before that, I know that the wording says regulating and controlling clear cutting and the associated public nuisance. I think that's an harsh comment in a way. Would something better be written in there? Just that it kind of accuses farmers or landowners of creating a nuisance. The, I know it's, but it, can we not word this differently so it doesn't offend anybody that wants to clear cut? Got you, I don't know.
Anybody on council? Go ahead, John.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Jacques on this. Maybe it, that, that's, that's, that's an assumption then that in there that, that clear cutting is a public nuisance.
Yeah, that, that's what I.
And in some, and in some cases it's not, like, I mean, we've had some cases obviously where, where it has become a nuisance, but we have a lot, a lot of our agricultural community that do it properly and it wasn't a nuisance. So maybe, maybe we can just look at rewording that somehow, regulating and controlling clear cutting.
I think that's adequate.
Regulating and controlling clear cutting.
Yeah.
Another word for nuisance, which is doesn't apply negative is externalities, just throwing it out there. Associated externalities, which could mean anything positive or negative.
No, I think regulating and managing, or what was, what was it? Regulating and controlling, I think is, 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 it says it all.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with Karma and I also agree with Jacques that I would like to see something about at least maintaining our percentage of tree cover so that it shows we're, as we're approving clear cutting, that we're also planning for replacement.
I guess, I, I guess my problem with that would only be that, for example, next time, you know, we set a goal of, I, you know, I, I think we're at 33% if I recall, we, you know, and the next time we come and it's at 32 and we, we have that goal in there, then does everybody clear cut in between those four years? Between the next canopy cover? You know what I mean? Like, is that just going to enhance people to just get going and clear cut? Because, oh my God, we're not going to be able to clear cut anymore. Let's, let's get it done, whether they.
I guess my, my view is more like, okay, we're planning for the tree giveaway. We're looking at green space. It's more to alert council that as we're approving the different clear cutting projects that at the same time we're looking towards replacing.
Yeah, I know, and I, I, I think, is that not, I'm just trying to recall, we, we've talked about this before. Go ahead.
And I agree with that. I, I just, I don't know whether that, if this is a, we're calling it, this is a clear cut bylaw. So basically everything that's in here should, should be just dealing with, with clear cutting. That, that's my feeling on it. Maybe we need something else. Maybe we need a.
I think that's probably more of an, an action plan on behalf of council. You know, like we've committed, you know, we committed $500 last year to, to, you know, to buying trees. You know, maybe that's just part of our, you know, maybe, maybe we need to up that. Well, maybe.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with that. It is a tree cutting bylaw. However, the amount of discussion we've had around it and the time spent on it, it seems like it's also an opportunity to address our tree canopy. We wouldn't be concerned about the tree cutting if we were not also concerned about tree canopy. So I'm just looking at it as an opportunity to address both.
So if I may comment, the raison d'eregen Conservation Authority provided a number that the tree cover was 33% in 2014, so by now it's surely closer to 30%, just to keep that in mind.
And having a goal statement, you know, we don't, we try our best to strive by it, but it doesn't mean that we fail if it is, you know, if we are lower than what we targeted, but it is at least reminding us of what our goal.
Okay, so what does the rest of council want to do? I'm just asking by, is that something that we want to include within this? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yeah, well, ideally, I would like to include it, but it changes this, the entire scope of the bylaw. That's the problem. And, and there's no sense in mentioning something in there and then not addressing it, right? With an action plan of sorts, so I, I think, I think maybe, you know, you know, when, when we're talking about planting trees and, you know, what we talked about at our council meeting just recently, you know, if we're, if we're to, you know, maybe put together an ad hoc committee that, that, that talks about, you know, tree planting and canopy conservation and then, you know, you know, develop a, a, a plan through an ad hoc committee versus putting it in this bylaw.
Okay, and Councilman, I know, wait, okay, go ahead.
I, and I, I, I agree with that. I just think there are, there are quite a few things that we could include in that. We could include like green roads, like some, some guidelines for green roads. Those, because we had lots of people comment on green roads as well. So maybe we should have a, like a, like Karma said, maybe some sort of, like a policy or a guideline of some sort that, that, you know, deals with our green roads, our canopy cover, that kind of stuff or whatever, and, and embed that into our, our strap plan.
Okay, so before we get too far off course here, can we, can we just decide here whether we want to include that or not? I, you know, I agree with what everybody's saying. It definitely needs to be part. And, you know, and I think maybe that's part of our strategic plan. Jeff, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, yeah, so I, I'll, I'll say no. I don't think it should be part of.
Okay.
It's by law.
Yeah, same here, same here, Mr. Mayor. Like it, it, it clearly states recorded on, adopt, maintain policy to protect and enhance the tree canopy and natural vegetation. The only thing I see is we had a point seven or something. We can add it what Jeff was saying, like protecting our side roads or green roads and everything, like if we add another point seven at the end.
Why, I, again, I think we're just muddying the waters a little bit. I, I think we, my opinion is that we have a, that we include it within our strategic plan.
Okay, and then because we don't have any clear data of what the percentage is anyway, so if we, if we're like, if this is the living document, we can review everything when we do get a, a recent estimation.
I agree with that.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I had some technical difficulties. I thought I must have said the wrong thing and then my computer shut down. Pardon me?
So, I said, we got through everything. We're all done.
Perfect. Good job.
Okay, so it looks like we will leave as is. No inclusion of that 30%, but we will discuss that within the parameters of our strategic plan.
Okay, so I think through the discussion, the last few minutes, we have effectively covered the next two points, but I will just read it. So intent, this bylaw applies to only to woodlands, one hectare, 2.5 acres or more located on the property within the township of North Glengarry and the comment is this bylaw protects environment, wildlife, public spaces and North Glengarry property owners. It requires those seeking to clear cut woodlands of one hectare into five, five acres or more in the township to obtain a permit. Okay, I think we're clear on that. Then we agreed about the 30% policy, which will not be happening, just the strategic plan. And then we agreed on the wording here, so regulating, controlling, clear cutting, do not mention the word nuisance.
All right. Good.
Okay, and then I have under the same portion of the bylaw intent, somebody commented to add North Glengarry's goal is to maintain, okay, all right, so, so again, the repetitive comment, we have covered that. Next one, for, so this bylaw, the comment is this bylaw is not intended to impede normal farm practices. This wording was suggested by the GFA, so council starts on that.
Okay, members of council?
What, what, what is it, Kasia? Which one, which one are we looking at? Sorry.
So we're still at the intent section.
Okay.
And the comment is this bylaw is not intended to impede normal farm practices. I think there was general consensus that we should have this from the previous meetings.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Okay, so just note add. Add in here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just said regarding the 2.5 acres minimum, what did the GFA, did they have any comment on that? Like, did they, they think that was too small? I still think it's too smaller of an area, but what did their, their comments were? Like, if we could put two acres, the two hectares, sorry. I don't know, because I talked to many guys, they seemed, they seemed okay with it. I'm just, I tried to download the document, but with the comments and everything.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I've got their document here, Jacques. It says, this is from the GFA. The area of 2.5 acres is of concern as we fear that the administration, administrative burden on staff and cost to the township will be exorbitant, exorbitant. We talked about that in that meeting and basically said we didn't think that that was going to be a problem for, for staff. So they sort of backed off on that or whatever and they said, it's okay.
Whatever they, yeah, if, if they're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, so, all right, council's okay. So going back to the intent of the bylaw, the next comment reads, make agricultural lands that used to be in production five, 10, 15 years ago exempt from the bylaw. So that's another comment from the GFA. Should we add this?
Yes, because if you look at those, the lands that were in, in production even 15 years ago, it's mainly brush and trees that are like a 15-year-old tree. It's not really a 15-year-old tree, like it's not a, it's, so I would say that, that could be, that could be put in there so there is an exemption, like maybe, maybe go, at least go up to 10 years.
I guess my, my point on that is we're, we're not, we're not legislating against clear cutting it. All we want to make sure is, is the nuisance part. So i- if somebody's had something that's been there for 15 years and, and they didn't put it into, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we, all, all we're asking is just where are you going to put your piles? How are you going to burn them? All the, all, all those, those kinds of things, where, you know, where the rock's going, anything like that. So I, I don't, I just don't, I don't know that it's really a nuisance, but Deputy Mayor, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the intent of the bylaw is to regulate clear cutting and, you know, regardless of whether it was cultivated in the past, it is still being cleared and it's the, it's the clearing, the method of clearing and disposing and cleaning up and timelines that we're trying to regulate. So I, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think we should put that in there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
What I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that if you, if you go out there and you find these 10-year-old field that were worked on, there's no trees, it's only shrubs, trees don't grow that fast, so that's what I'm getting at. Like, you know.
But you're still gonna have, you're still gonna have debris that has to be burned or?
I know, I know that, but that's.
And, and so that, yeah, and so that debris should be subject to the bylaw.
And, and the other, the other thing is Jacques is, Councilor Massey is, you know, how, how do we know how long something has?
No, I, I know, but could, could it be then to the discretion of the officer or the?
It'll be that anyways.
Okay, so if he says, well, you don't need a permit for that, that's okay.
No. Well, no, he's gonna, they, well, it'll definitely be up to whoever the permitting office is. If, if they go and it's, it's all stuff that's under less than half a foot or whatever, I'm just.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna say that you probably don't need a permit.
It's basically, it's, it's not a clear cutting situation, then it's a clearing.
Brass cutting.
Can I add something on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Something to consider if you're looking at something that hasn't been in production for five, 10, 15 years, you're potentially looking at fields that are a little more cut up. And if they're bringing them back into production, realistically, they're going to clear their tree lines for the machinery. So this in terms of the clearances from neighboring properties, as the mayor said, where you're putting piles to burn, it should, I think, apply on this because there's still risk of contravening a neighboring property owner's usage.
Yeah, I think there seems to be a consensus on council right now for that to, to stay. Okay.
Okay, so are we, we're adding this effectively, some kind of policy? Okay, thank you. Next comment, water cores and municipal drains are exempt. So municipal drain should be exempt. This is not intent of the bylaw, define more. So provide a definition of what is exempt, SDG counties mapping reference, municipal drainage act supersedes this bylaw. That's correct. And we can reference the municipal drainage act in the bylaw. I think that's a good idea. And we could reference the SDG counties map and as a reference for this bylaw, which identifies the municipal drain. So that could be the base for identifying what is a municipal drain. Council comments?
One thing for sure that they were looking at was for us to identify what the actual water courses were. And I don't, I don't see that that would be that difficult. We, we pretty much know where all those water courses are and just to map that out because, and is that what others thought that they were asking as well?
Yes.
Yeah, like definitely municipal drain, they don't apply because you do have to clean it up once.
Well, they do, yeah, no, no, for sure.
So, and there wouldn't be that many water course here anyways, but I think the Ontario environmental law already protects those water courses from doing anything close to it.
Other comments from council?
No? And, so, sorry, Mr. Mayor, can, can I, can we just go back to the one above that? I'm, I'm just can. It says add there. I don't know, what are, what are we adding, Kasia?
So I gather that council wants to protect the lands that used to be in production five, 10, 15 years?
I just don't even know that we need to put that in there.
No, I don't think, yeah, that statement doesn't go in there. That's, that's what council.
Yeah, and it says this bylaw is not intended to impede normal farm practices. That's, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so, and we're good with you.
Okay, so from this comment, yeah, the reference will be the SDG counties map and it will be in the bylaw. That's what is agreed and then the municipal drainage act shall be mentioned. Is that what is agreed?
Yeah, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I was talking to Duncan Ferguson this morning just to kind of get a refresh. And one of the things we were talking about was municipal drains and, and how this bylaw can't, mustn't contradict the drainage act. So do we know that, that the wording in here does not contradict the drainage act? Kasia?
So I know there is a certain setback from municipal drains, depends on what is being proposed, but I think it's at least 10 meters, so no, it doesn't contradict.
Okay.
Everybody's good with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Next.
Okay, just taking quick notes. All right. Policy 2.1, so the policy reads clerk means clerk of the Corporation of Township of North Glengarry or the designate. And then the comment is the definition is very open-ended and opens you up to significant enforcement issues. The way I interpreted the definition, any tree injured or killed in the area of greater than one hectare is considered clear cutting. I would recommend that you provide a better definition of what clear cutting means within the scope of this bylaw. Comments?
That, that's 2.1 in the bylaw?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's 2.1 and 2.2 sort of.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Council?
Maybe, I, I get what they're saying about the clear cut. The clerk thing for me is fine.
Yeah.
We know what the clerk is and then, and then that's, that's a set position within the township. So that's, that to me is not an issue, but the clear cutting, it does say, means any action which causes or results in irreversible injury or death of trees in an area of one hectare. So I see where they're saying, where they're saying, does that mean like two or three trees in an area of one hectare will be considered clear cutting? I can see how they're, that, that's a little confusing, so maybe we want to say means the action in which causes results or results in the irreversible injury and death of all trees
Yeah.
in an area.
Yes.
Of one hectare, right? That would just clear it up.
Yeah.
Should we, no, should we put the majority of trees? Because if you say all trees and they leave up five trees, does that mean it's not all trees?
Majorities.
I would, I would put the majority of trees. Yeah, that's better.
Well, majority, clear cutting means clear cutting. It doesn't mean a majority or something.
Is that what you want the definition to be, Jacques? Clear cutting is clear cutting?
That's what they're asking here. They're, we're defining the clear cutting, what it means to.
It's the, yeah, the majority, when you're cutting down the majority of trees.
I, I would say results over 80% of the trees. Why?
That would, that would be a majority.
How about an area of trees of one hectare or greater?
Oh, yeah. Well, you, you don't want to confuse that with selective cutting because we're not regulating selective cutting.
That's exactly right.
What you're saying, you've cleared a hectare of trees.
That's what it is, selective. That's what it is, selective cutting, thirty-five percent.
I like majority, I think that.
Everybody good with majority?
No.
Okay. Okay, we'll move forward.
Okay, so I noted the result and the injury or death of the majority of trees. Two point two, okay, we clarified this item, I think we can move on to the next one. The comment is the area of two point five acres of concern as we fear that the administrative burden, okay, of staff.
Yeah, we've already dealt with that.
Looked at with that, okay?
Excuse me, um, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
If we could just go back to the previous one for a second, can we add in that definition? Well, no, it's a definition, we can't. Do we, do we define clear cutting, or I mean selective cutting?
So that's something that was not included in the current draft of the bylaw and I believe council did agree that selective clear cutting should be exempt?
Yes, so I think we need to say that somewhere in this bylaw.
Okay.
I think we need to, just, just, just to, so that it's clear.
Okay, uh, can, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just Googled it there and clear cut means cut down and remove every tree from an area, that's what it means, clear cutting. Every tree.
The point, the point is, Jacques, if somebody keeps up trees uh on one side or something, they, you know, if our definition is all trees, uh, then they aren't really clear cutting, they leave up uh five percent of the trees. So that's why we're saying it's, it's considered clear cutting if you're cutting the majority on the trees on a one hectare lot.
Besides, if the hectares along a roadway, we would encourage that a row of trees be kept along the road. So again, that would support leaving the wording to majority as opposed to all.
So if we're talking about selective tree cutting, can we also include in that? And, and Mike, you probably know a better way of saying this, but the cutting of diseased trees or cutting in that, you know, in the selective cutting, just to explain, you can cut down, you know, the trees that are dying and that's not a problem, you don't need to ask for a permit, even if there's a lot of them, again.
Selective cutting?
Yeah.
It's still selective, I think that.
Yes, selective and broad.
Yeah.
Or we could include the good forestry practices or best forestry practices, which encompasses everything. Selective diseased trees and all defined in the forestry act.
That's a good point.
You have the good forestry practices there.
Yeah, good idea, Kasia.
Okay, so which?
Yeah, Jacques, right, the good forestry practices is put in uh.
Right below.
Right below.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah.
And there, it comes in twice.
Okay.
Their comment was to get rid of that good forestry practices because it never comes up in the bylaw again.
Right. No, but I, I think if we want something in there, we need to uh, if we want to talk about select cutting, that, this is why, that's why we were adding it.
Run the definition of the good forestry practices and leave it in.
I'd say so.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh, so then we can move on to two point four, good forestry practices. As far as we can see, this term does not appear in the bylaw other than section three, as such unnecessary. Okay, so we agreed to include good forestry practices being exempt, okay. Two point five, harvest, uh, so the current bylaw reads harvest means the injury or destruction of a tree through clear cutting, through cutting or other mechanized means to produce a forest product, including all harvesting practices. The comment being if tree cutting does not result in forest products, it is not considered harvesting, this would create a problem the way the words harvest and harvesting are used in the bylaw. Comments?
Comments, council?
That's two point five, is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I think that's fine like that, we just don't wanna. Yeah.
In previous versions, the words injury was used and it was found to be a little bit offensive by council, so we opted for harvest, that's the reason for the word.
Harvest is perfect, any, any cutting of the three or cutting means injury or whatever.
Okay, so we're.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so keep harvest wording, okay.
Kasia, does that make sense to you?
It does make sense, I don't see a major issue with this one here.
Okay.
Alright, so moving on. Two point seven, okay, so back to normal farm practices. The current bylaw means an agriculture practice which is conducted in a manner consistent with proper and acceptable customs and standards as established and followed by similar agriculture operations under similar circumstances or makes use of innovative technology in a manner consistent with proper advanced farm management practices regarding normal farm practice. Comment, who decides what is a normal farm practice? Where is this information coming from? Will it be an officer of the township who decides this? Council comments?
Anybody? Go ahead, Council Noble.
This would be a good place to include the line does not impede farming or normal farm, well, again, normal farm practices. And then I was under the impression that we were using the Omaha for a definition.
Yes, that, that is where it's from.
So I just want to throw that in there.
Yeah, I can, I can add a reference that it's Omaha citation.
Just, just, just that and uh, we live there.
Okay, so add that we are not impeding normal farm practices and then Omaha for a citation, is that okay?
Yes.
For definition.
Okay, Omaha for citations.
Can I ask, so we go back to harvest for a quick second before?
Harvest, sure, okay, harvest, yes.
Um, I was just looking at the way, the point that they made about how it was used in the bylaw. And it does say, it says injury or destruction, but it leads or to the ending that says to produce a forestry product. So their point is that if it's not being used for a forestry product, is it actually harvesting? So how about we just add in after produce a forestry product or otherwise? Which is, you know, fell in a tree to put it in a burn pile.
Or, yeah, firewood, you know?
Yeah, anything like that. You can make a case that firewood is a forestry product, but a lot of these trees just get dropped and put into a pile, right?
That would clear it up, adding otherwise or otherwise.
Bring them all to your placement.
Okay.
So going back to uh, row nineteen, which is pertaining to two, two point seven. Uh, should the township wish to be consistent with the provincial policy statement, the county official plan and the township zoning bylaw? Water course or water body may include fish habitat and features such as a bay lake, natural water course, canal, municipal or other drain headwater. So this blue comment, uh, that means it comes from the conservation authorities. I had a lengthy discussion about the definition of what a water course or water body should be. At their agency, they have a thorough definition with multi- multiple levels of what is a water course. And they were supposed to provide me with more information um to agree upon what kind of class and how high does the protection for a water course or water body could potentially go. I have not received that classification system from them yet so far. But from the previous comments and conversations, I think the main point was that municipal drains would be excluded. Any other comments from council?
I, I don't think it's our, it's our duty to start uh regulating a water course or water body, defining it and then implementing bylaws to protect it. I think we'll leave that to the province, I think.
The conservation authorities as well.
Yeah, that's why they're there.
Everybody else, okay?
Can you just put in the word except municipal drains? Or some better way to say that?
So how did we get into this discussion right here? Because we left the normal.
Two point one five.
I don't have the same order as, as the, what I print, what you printed off as what you're going through there. Oh, we just dumped over a bunch of stuff, or?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, but we do have a two, okay, that's, sorry.
So, so right now, the um, in the bylaw reads water course or water body means a stream, river or creek. That's what it says in the bylaw right now.
Yes.
So, so are we adding um, municipal drains are exempt?
Except municipal drains.
Except municipal drains?
I'll make it clear for everyone.
Okay.
Okay, so municipal drains excluded, okay, uh, row thirty-two point one six. Okay, this one is super important and controversial, many comments, this one from both sides, tree huggers and farmers. So woodlands, uh, what does it mean, uh, woodlands? So the current definition is land covered with trees regardless of species size density. So yes, this comment is super vague, uh, and the previous version of the bylaw, it included uh the number of trees per hectare and then council decided that this will be too labor intensive. We cannot go out there and count those trees, so maybe we could come up with kind of um, something in the middle, any thoughts?
I think a percentage is a good idea, the example given is three quarters is tree, maybe that's an easy, quick way to look at a piece of property.
So kind of going back to the clear cutting, the majority of trees linking to that, okay. Any other comments?
Do we need that definition in there?
Well, we definitely need that definition, this is the basis of the bylaw.
I remember at the meeting Googling uh woodlands and all the different definitions and basically it's a natural habitat with plants or trees or land covered by trees or forests with open canopy, so it is kind of broad. I mean, technical, or not technically, but what we've been looking at are forests essentially being chopped down. Whether they're scrub bush or they're real bush, so it is a very, it itself woodland is a very vague definition.
Kasia, can you scroll just a bit so we can see the next comment on this one?
Okay.
Yeah, can you read it through the comments, please?
So for this one, it was, I suggest improving the definition, so it's clearer about what constitutes a woodland. The definition seems to contradict itself when it refers to land covered with trees. Later says regardless of density. Okay, it is not clear what a woodland is, you will encounter enforcement issues. I will use my property as example, my property is about two and a half acres and currently covered three fourths by trees, okay? It is my entire property considered a woodland or only the tree portion?
Good point.
So this is where Mike's thing about one hectare of trees comes in.
If, if, if there's, if, if you have two and a half acres of land and only three quarters is treed, then this bylaw does not apply.
Yep.
But then what are you looking at, Jeff? Eighty percent instead of seventy-five percent? Because if the majority.
No, I'm not saying that it's, that the area of the trees is less than two point five acres and we're only looking at treed areas of two point five acres or greater.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
So what is the consensus? Majority of tree cover?
But what if, Jeff, what if the um, the property is sparsely covered with trees?
Yeah.
Then it's not majority.
Covered all the same.
But it wouldn't be majority, which is the word we're trying to use so that we don't have to be cornered into a strict definition.
But if, let's say it was a, a, a three acre property and it was sparsely covered with trees and all of those trees were going to be cleared, it is, it is clear cutting, because it's taking all the trees, right?
Or eighty percent of them.
Right.
Yes, yes, I would say so.
Three percent.
So.
Doesn't the ministry of forestry have a specific description of a woodland?
They did, and it was the one with, say, ten thousand trees per hectare, so it had to go. So that was, it was very, very specific and.
I know, but uh, if not, then we open ourselves, we open the, the, to uh, we open the, the, the two point five acres uh for discussion, because I'll say, well, I only got one tree per. We have to use their, their definition, because if we're gonna use their good forestry practices, might as well use their good forestry definitions.
Yeah, I, um, I agree, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Jack, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we, we need to use a well-accepted definition here for sure. But I, I see what you've written here, Kasia, the majority of lands covered with trees, eighty percent. The eighty percent refers to not the tree coverage, it's the, it's the percentage of trees that are coming down. Not, not the, yeah.
Within the clear cutting area.
So it doesn't really matter how many trees are on the property. It matters if they're, if the, if the vast majority of them are being taken down, then, then this bylaw applies. So I'm not sure how we can state that. That's what we need to state. You know what I mean? Clear as mud?
Well, I, I thought I understood it earlier, that we're trying to define the woodland. So we're considering a piece of property that the majority of that piece of property be covered with trees. That's how I understood the discussion earlier, but now you're saying something different, Karma. Where if we plan to clear eighty percent of the trees in any given lot, I think we're, if we try to use a ministry definition, it will be very difficult to enforce their definitions, we just don't have the expertise or the personnel to do that for us. So I, I think that the whole point of this size is to make something clear and simple that we can enforce ourselves by making our own definition as opposed to trying to use a ministry definition. Gets more, I think we want to keep it a little less complicated.
But I think legally we're opening ourselves to uh different uh.
We're going to be looking at ea- each application individually anyway. So that if, if there's, needs to be further discussion around a particular property, we'll have the opportunity to do that. I think right now this is kind of our starting point. You know, I don't know how specific we can be when, when we still have lots to learn as we implement this new policy.
And, and I don't think that a lot of two point five or one hectare lot are gonna start getting clear cut, then we'll have that discussion, I think they'll be much bigger than that, so we won't have this conversation anyway, so.
Yeah.
But it's.
Okay.
It would be nice to see something, yeah.
I, I, okay, let's just, we gotta keep moving here, so I'm for majority, who's for putting in eighty percent? I know Council Massey is.
Why don't we put ninety percent?
Where did you go? Okay, so uh, asking who want, how many people want majority, please answer.
We're saying that a piece of property that has more than eighty percent tree coverage is considered a woodlot.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Me too.
To be determined by aerial photographs.
Trees or including shrubs of over five years old or something.
Okay, no, we can't, we're getting too deep.
Okay, uh, you know what, I do not see how you're gonna, how, how are you, how are you going to measure that?
No.
That the lot has eighty percent tree coverage, that just, that.
I like the idea of the aerial view.
I agree with Joanne on this, I, I think we're getting in way too deep here.
Yeah, because then if you're looking at a property that's half covered in trees.
Well, I agree, I agree.
They want to clear it, they just go and clear it, right? It's no longer subject to this.
Well, we're, we're getting back to the problem of um, you know, uh, back to the, if, if it was, if it was already cultivated five, ten, fifteen years ago, the point is, is that what we need to remember is that, is that if this land is being cleared, we want to be able to regulate the way it's being cleared. So that's what we need to remember.
Yes.
Well, exactly, and that's why I just think by putting majority.
Yeah, okay.
We're sticking with that and it keeps it simple and let, let's, let's be clear. And let, let's, let's be clear, there aren't a lot of two point five acre clearings that are going to happen.
No.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, everybody good? Please, let's, I want to hear from at least four people. Are four people good with majority?
Yes.
Okay, move on.
Majority, so no eighty percent reference?
No.
No, because the definition here is anywhere between thirty to a hundred percent cover is a woodland.
Right.
Okay, all right, it's noted. So the next one, we might have covered already. So I'll just read the comments. Woodland or woodlands could be defined by referencing an accepted classification system such as MNRF Ecological Land Classification System. For example, which provides objective thresholds that would minimize uncertainty. So this is a definition that we had previously and it was way too, would have been labor intensive for enforcement, so.
Yeah.
Nope. And the next comment is this definition of a woodland is too strict. We suggest a definition that would allow the reclamation of a field that has been overgrown by a few saplings to be exempt from the permit process. So I think council has agreed that this would not be exempt. It's five, ten years prior. Okay, all right, so moving on. Next one, woodland's definition again. So the comment, if you have a rough pasture, non-tileable land of ten acres at this time with five hundred trees or less on it, is this a woodland? What defines woodlands and who decides and brushwood, thorn, apple, prickly ash, low-growing shrub, brush or scrub considered a woodland? Can this be cleaned up? So discussing if shrubs would be considered a woodland, I don't think that it would be.
Yes, it falls under the bylaw.
Yeah, majority.
Okay, majority. Shrubs, however, so short shrubs, say one feet, that would not be applicable, I think.
A majority tree cover, shrub is not.
If you can bush hog it, you're not clear cutting.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So next comment, so woodlands may, may wish to exclude or have provision for diseased trees. So we agreed selective tree cutting, good forestry practices are exempt.
Yeah.
And next point, a definition for woodland or woodlands would be beneficial, for example.
I think we've all done this, right?
Yep, I'm just trying to make sure we're covering all the comments. All right, and next, two point one seven, it says add item. Registered professional forester as defined in the Professional Foresters Act two thousand. So that's a suggestion to run.
Okay.
Oh, to add that, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't see any two point one seven.
Yeah, that's good.
Why, why do we need to add that?
I suppose if there was to be a consultation for a dispute and a registered forester is the ultimate expert on this matter, that will be one.
Okay, good.
And, okay. All right, next point, I'm just gonna scroll here. Two point one eight, add item, subcultural prescription means a site-specific operation plan that prescribes existing forest conditions and the forest management objectives for an area and professional recommendations for harvesting and controlling the establishment, composition, constitution and growth of forest from seedlings through the desired endpoint of the forest in a manner that accommodates or other resources valid as identified. So this definition is what a registered forester would prescribe for the good forestry practices. So council may consider to add this. I don't think it would hinder the bylaw in any way.
We don't need.
No, it's not necessary.
Management, this isn't about clearing.
Really, yeah.
Don't, not adding it, okay, not added, okay.
Yeah.
All right, point three point one, okay. So this is for, this bylaw applies to the clear cutting of woodlands within an area of one hectare or more in one calendar year in an individual rural number within the township, including lands in any municipal zone and land subject to further land use conversion or Municipal Planning Act applications. Comments, cutting one, cutting, cutting on one contiguous hectare or cutting on multiple smaller areas combined for one rural number. So I think what they're trying to get at is when we are going across a rural number, the administrative tax rule for a property, how are we going to administer that? Does it have to be within a one rural number or can we go across that boundary? Comments?
One rural number.
I take that as they're talking about doing little chunks on, on one piece of property, multiple chunks on one piece of property.
Yeah, doing it a little bit at a time.
And so I, that's what we, we don't want to, we don't want this bylaw to be circumvented.
So say you've got a block of trees on a piece of property and you want that block of trees to eventually become a field. So you do a half a hectare at the north side and a half a hectare at the south side on each year. And you eventually whittle it away so that it's gone.
Doesn't apply because it's not two point five, one hectare at a time.
You're doing a half hectare, ha- half hectare on one side and a half hectare at the other side and it's on one rural number, it's one. So what you're saying.
So, so you do, so you do two chunks that meet just more than two and a half.
Believe me, if somebody wants to circumvent this bylaw by doing a half a hectare every year. I, I, I slow clap them, like, good job.
Fair enough.
So I, I, I think that it does not need to.
Okay, so no change here. Is that a consensus? Okay. Okay, thank you. Next point, we are still on three point one, blue comment, which means conservation authority. Does the bylaw only apply to clear cutting, complete harvest of trees? Does include, okay, I think we have answered this question. We can move on again. So three point two, good forestry practices will be based on the most up-to-date provincial civil cultural guide. Okay, and then a comment, will the circulation of a permit include a registered professional forester? Who will have the qualifications to determine whether an application implements the provincial civil cultural guide?
Counselor Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, provincial civil v. cultural guide, isn't that the, 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 the culture, the, the culture or the harvesting of saplings and growing them to like, like a Christmas tree farm or something? Doesn't the province have a forestry guide?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It has to be because silver cultural is, it's the growing from the seedling trees like it's a crop. It's forestry is forestry. So should we not use that one? Can we not say good forestry practice or will be based on the most up-to-date provincial forestry guide instead of civil control?
Well, I, I think, do we not already say that within this bylaw?
We did.
Already played down the civil cultural.
No, it was taken out earlier on.
Yeah, that's saying, so I think it's the, it's, it's according to OMAFRA, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can just put that as according to OMAFRA.
Because OMAFRA represents farming, so that's farming. Forestry is a different industry, if I'm correct.
I know, but if forestry is coming in on, on, on to clear cut, they're going to be clear cutting for farmland.
No, I know, but civil control is when I, when you grow trees on your place, like Christmas trees or trees to resell or something. That's the culture, the culture of trees or the, you know, the, it's just like growing corn, but you're growing trees to resell. Civil control, that's what it is. Forestry is when you're cutting stuff.
Okay.
That maybe.
Do, do we need three point two in there?
We have it in two point four.
Yeah.
I agree. It's repeated, yeah.
So I think we can take it out.
Okay, remove three point two. It's already referenced in two point four. Okay. Any other comments for this one?
No.
All right, next comment. These points do not seem to qualify any other points in the bylaw and such add to confusion of the internal bylaw. So I think same thing, we are.
Taking it out.
Yeah.
Prak, so next comment. Okay, practices that are in line with the provincial civil cultural guide are exempt. From the clear cutting.
That's why I took it out.
Okay, taken out. Okay, three point three. So the bylaw currently reads best management practices for farming will be based on the most up-to-date practices from the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, OMAFRA. And then comment, how will best practices for farming from the OMAFRA be determined? Is this referring to an OMAFRA guideline or the decisions from the normal farm practices protection board?
Definitely outside of our, our tree cutting bylaw.
This is the comment, Joey.
Yeah.
Leave it, we'll deal, if we're gonna get, if we have to get there in court and we have to debate that, I think we can address it at that time here, but for now on.
You'll be the lawyer.
Yeah. Have a question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so if you look at the comment underneath it, I'm just wondering if this needs to be in there either.
Because it is two point seven, normal farm practices.
Yeah, again, it's repeated. I think it could be removed.
Yeah.
Okay, remove three point three exists under two point seven. Okay, so we're okay with that?
Remove two point seven two eight.
Well, I think there should be a reference in the normal farm practices because they should not be affected by this bylaw. So it should be.
Yeah, under definition.
Okay, so four point one, it currently reads, except as provided in this bylaw, no person through their own actions or through any other person conduct operations to harvest woodland larger than one hectare or more than one calendar year unless a permit has been obtained in accordance with this bylaw. Comments, according to the definition of harvest in section two point five, if the trees that are cut are not enforced products, it would not be considered harvests. So if land is cleared and all the trees are burnt on site or disposed of without being sold as forest products, the bylaw, the bylaw would not apply. Also, how would the bylaw deal with a land, woodland that was cleared of trees under good forestry practices? Then sold a year or to later to someone else who converts the property to another use? There's a lot in there.
We addressed by adding otherwise or otherwise earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, so.
Changed harvest to read or otherwise, right?
No, no, because, sorry, if we go back.
That in two point five.
The definition of harvest is means, it includes everything, so we should just leave it like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so harvest or otherwise the wording, we already touched upon.
Yeah, don't add nothing, just leave it like that.
Okay, three seven, next point. So harvest trees, the comment, harvest trees within five meters of a water course, a municipal drain, a PSW or SW or NC. So this is an addition, a suggested addition. What does council think of this?
That's under four point three.
Yes.
And who suggested this?
It's already in four point three.
Yeah, that's what it says in four point three.
Okay, so I'm not sure what this comment.
Yeah.
It's already there.
So then we can move forward, four point two. So the bylaw reads no person through their own actions or through any other person shall, and then harvest trees within two point five meters of the property boundary of a county or municipal road, including green roads and road allowances except dot, dot, dot.
That's later on.
Yeah.
And four point four.
Okay.
Just, just a minute, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just reading, trying to read this. A person through their own action or through any other person shall not harvest, okay. Yeah, I just don't, some, shall not harvest. Okay, no, it's kind of reading, it kind of, kind of confusing as elders.
What are you looking at, please?
Well, it's all, it's all just menagerie there. We're in four point two, but it's actually four point four in our thing.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's why I'm.
Yeah.
Where are we, Kasia?
So right now we're on four point two and four point three.
Through their own action or through their, shall not, yeah, but we have more, more to this.
There's nothing in four point two.
Okay, so I'll keep reading, four point three. So a person through their own actions shall not harvest trees within five meters of a water course or eventually significant wetland. And the comment goes, according to the definition of harvest in section two point five, if the trees are cut or are not into forest products, it would be considered harvest.
Already read that.
Already done.
All right.
What's the rest of it say, though?
It's the same one she just read a little while ago.
Should, should we just go by what you printed me off this morning, then read the comments and see what?
Go by the draft bylaw now?
Yeah. Because right now we don't, it doesn't match up. Unless I'm the only one, but.
I, well, I'm still on four point two and wondering what happened.
Yeah, it's, it's very confusing here.
Oh, yeah, these comments were split up, that's why it's.
If you would read the, from the draft bylaw, instead of there, I think it would be reversed, then.
Because this is the contentious part, four, the section four is where it gets rough.
Yeah.
One second, I'm going to share my screen for the draft bylaw, the PDF.
So you keep an eye on the comments. And then we'll look at the draft bylaw.
Okay.
You might be adding stuff that's already in the draft bylaw here, that is not on your sheet. Is that possible or?
One second, I think I have a lot, okay. Okay, so let's go to four point two and see what it reads. Okay, so I'm just going to read four point two and then we'll go back to the comments, so it makes sense. So four point two, no person through their own actions or through any other person shall, A, fail to comply with an order issued under this bylaw. B, remove or deface any order that has been posted pursuant to this bylaw. And C, contravene to the terms or conditions of a permit issued under this bylaw. So that comment that I read was pertaining to this, flip back to my charts here. So.
Four point two, yeah.
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 So according to the definition of harvest.
No, you're on.
Here.
Need the one on top.
Okay, this, this one?
Yeah.
Harvest trees within two point five meters of the property boundary of a county.
Four point three.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not.
No, four point two, there's nothing about anything in four point two. It's the next where we get four point four, they get all into the meters.
Okay, well, okay, so four point two are.
Right, four point two is good?
Okay, we're good with that, okay, so. Okay, so I'll go back to my PDF to read four point three. A person through their own actions or, or through any other person shall not harvest trees within five meters of where a course or provincially significant wetland, four point four. A person shall not harvest any tree that is to remain standing after the harvesting of trees is completed. And B, operate a vehicle, machinery or equipment or conduct operations in a manner or at a time that has, that results in the leaving of any part of a tree or in a water course, including any trees that have not been harvested but have been pushed, knocked over or otherwise ended up in a water course. Okay, let's see if we can find the comments for this one.
We, we, we need to go back to four point three.
Yeah.
You've gone right to four point four.
Okay. So here we go.
Were there comments on four three? Yeah.
So according to the definition of harvest in section two point five, if the trees are cut, not into forest products, and it will be not considered a harvest. So again, this question about harvesting. So I think we.
What does the remainder of that say, Kasia? Is there other stuff in there that, I can't read it, it's too small on mine?
Okay, so if land is cleared and all trees are burned on site or disposed of without being sold as forest products, the bylaw would not apply. Also, how would the bylaw? The bylaw would not apply. Also, how would the bylaw deal with a woodland that was cleared or trees? Under the good forestry practices, then sold a year or two later to someone else who converts the property to another use. That's the reading.
There's no confusion there, harvest is cutting or whatever you do with it, it doesn't matter.
I think we discussed this through the harvest and the exemption of good proportion practices. Okay, and.
Two boxes on your, you don't have to scroll, but if you look up two boxes, it says 4.3. You've got harvest trees within five meters of water course, a municipal drain, a PSW or LSW or NC. I think that's what they're, that's the comment that we need to be looking at for 4.3 that we're looking at. They're suggesting adding that on top of PSW or water course.
We're not, we're not doing a municipal drain. It, it, we, we've already decided that it's water courses.
Yep, okay, so that's 4.3.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We start, we won't be able to cut anywhere.
Yeah, so only protect exempting municipal drains, no other water body, is that right?
Do we need to state that? I know we've stated it before, but should we state that?
In the definition.
So the, the definition of the water course. So shall it be repeated again, the exemption of municipal drain?
It's already there, the person.
In water course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, alright. Okay, so back to here. We were at 4.4.
We read that one already, that's.
Okay, so I'll just keep reading the comments here. So 4.3 is, is this in the woodlots or does it include fence lines rows? So going back to the bylaw.
That's the water course, so that should be under 4.4.
Okay.
That's what we're doing right now is 4.4.
Yeah, and I, I read the 4.4 by law point already, so. Okay, the next comment is, there is no mention of young trees. That do not fit the definition or the shrubbery or other vegetation making up the riparian growth, so the vital health of the water course. The bylaw should stipulate that all growth within five meters of a water course or PSW must be left untouched. Comments?
I think we defined it clearly enough and. We're not gonna. Water courses, water.
Yeah, and I, I think if you're not cutting the trees down, I'm doubtful you're gonna be harvesting the rest of what's there. Yeah.
Okay, so no change, I guess. Okay, next. No change. Okay, clarification regarding the maintenance and establishment of drainage. Needs to be added to this point. In many instances, open water courses are drainage, or drainage courses, are drainage courses for both. Agricultural and residential lands, the right to maintain those water courses must not be overlooked and restricted by this bylaw. More research required.
Wasn't that more the drainage bylaw anyway?
So the Drainage Act is already existing and I think, yeah, we agreed to add it, a reference to it.
We've, we've exempted municipal drains, what about private drains?
Well, they can decide when they want there.
No, but do we need to indicate that municipal drains and private drains are exempted?
Yeah, sorry Karma, but we've already said it's only water courses anyways. So a, a private drain is considered a water.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Doesn't the council, private drain is considered a water course?
No.
No?
No.
No.
No, no, we're not changing anything, private, I guess, I mean, it doesn't hurt to put in, includes private drain, so.
Includes private drain.
No, 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 we don't want to, we don't want to include that, Jimmy.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, a, a private drain is the same as a municipal drain.
Exactly, yeah, so just, we don't add nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But because that's just a commentary, okay, so.
Yeah, it's just a comment.
Yeah, so to answer that comment, you say, we, we can reply, well, if it's not a water course. And we're covered.
Okay, next.
Next, so harvest trees within 2.5 meters of a lot line, a survey is required if a landowner wants to clear any land within five. Meters of a lot line, a suggestion for a survey. The person wanting to be, to do the clearing must pay for the survey, so.
Yes.
An option. Yes, I hear you.
This one, this one was controversial, right?
Yes.
We're not on, what point are we in now?
4.4.
C?
Okay, yeah, okay, sorry.
4.4C.
Ish.
Yeah.
Yes, 4.4C. So that would clarify, a survey will clarify any disputes of where the lot line is. Because most of the lands don't have surveys, especially for ag, they're just so large.
Didn't, didn't the GFA comment on this?
This is, and this is not.
No.
This, this is, this is saying that. Not to harvest trees within 2.5 meters of the lot line, are, but what's in the bylaw, the draft bylaw does not say lot line.
So the draft bylaw, what it says is harvest trees within 2.5 meters of the property boundary. Of a, of a county.
Of a county or municipal road, right, not the lot line.
I need that this is the difference.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, this one.
No, we don't have anything about this, and this is an absolute must in here.
Um, I think, sorry, I think this one was, was, was considered a deal breaker. They didn't want. But a buffer around county roads or municipal roads.
I think it was one pile that was a, a thing they didn't want.
No, they didn't want a buffer.
Because a buffer is, again, all the people I've been talking to is an absolute must, because the picture I showed you earlier. If you cut up right to the lot line, then you've ruined the other people's trees.
But you're, you're, you're talking about two different things, she's talking about county roads, you're talking about lot lines.
Yeah. They are two different things.
But this comment is about the survey.
Right, is about.
Create a lot line, which we don't even have, we don't even talk about here.
Yeah, well, let, let's just talk about what C says for a minute, because. Do you remember the conversation at, at the, the meeting with the GFA? That, because what I brought up is, I think the original intent of, of. For, for C was, was to, to create a buffer up against municipal roads and county roads. For, for winter safety.
Oh, yep.
That, I think that's the original idea behind this, but there was major pushback from the GFA saying. You know, you, you can't force us to leave trees on our property. Where, where, you know, we want to sort of cultivate that land. And I said, well, then we need to talk about other ways. To mitigate the, the safety issues with these. Large tracts of land that are cleared up against county roads. And the snow blows and causes significant safety hazards. And, and so we discussed that maybe this didn't need to be addressed in the bylaw itself. But that there was a possibility of sitting down with the GFA and coming up with a real plan to address. The safety issues relating to clear cutting right up to a road.
Yeah, but.
That, that was the, that's the way the conversation went, do you recall that?
Yes.
So.
We don't have that in there.
No, we haven't changed anything, but they want that out, is what I'm telling you.
I would say I, I would want it out too. Because you know what it does, you know what it does, just picture, picture going down the. 43 and there's a cornfield there. But then you gotta look through 10 feet of forest to see the cornfields, so that's what it would create. You know, there would be no more open fields at all.
We, 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 we don't want open fields around our roadways, Jacques, it creates huge.
Okay, so let's say.
Snow problems.
Just, just say, just for example, you go down the. I don't know, where are we gonna be putting the, the residential for the people across from the hospital? Will they be required to leave the trees 10 feet section that you can't see the, like, you know. Just try to picture yourself going down a road where you cannot see anymore, you cannot see field.
Okay, I, but.
That's not the point of this bylaw.
That's, that's the point, Karma.
Just, if, Jacques, if I can just jump in for a second, Karma, I think you're saying that. We'll come up with something else with the, with the farmers, not the 2.5 meter buffer of trees. Am I correct?
I think that's what the, that's what the suggestion was.
I'm asking you if that's what you're okay with.
Oh, um, yeah, well, as, as, as long as we can come to the table and come up with some potential solutions there, yes.
Okay, so I, I think we're all on the same page on that, is there anybody opposed to that? We're not talking about lot lines, we're talking about county road and, and township roads.
That's what, no, Jimmy, I would. That's, because it's all, it's all county roads and municipal roads. So no, no more looking in the guy making eight, because you can't see even more, it's all three.
Jacques, we agree with you. We're not, we're taking it out.
Okay, thank you.
Jacques, I'm gonna put it back in if you, you say one more word. Kidding.
Well.
So can we go now to lot lines?
Yeah, this one's, this one's a little different.
So I, you know. Go ahead, Councilor Noble, I think you wanted to discuss, talk on that as well, so go ahead.
Yeah, the, the roads thing, whatever, if I'm outvoted, that's fine, but the, yeah, no, the lot lines. Whether you're talking about windbreaks or just buffer zones. Whether you're talking about splitting the line down a forest, or whether you're talking about a forest onto. The neighbor's property which has no trees. I, I think the survey to actually decide where the lot line is is a big one. And the buffer zone, whatever it's gonna be, five, 10, 15 feet, whatever it's gonna be, has to be on. Obviously, on the property of the person doing the clear cutting.
I think one of the issues here was also deciphering what a lot line consists of. Because one of the issues was farmers' own fields side by side. And it should exempt if it is your own lot line. It should be exempt if it's a, a lot line of a neighboring property. And, you know, we're, if you're up on Sky Road recently, we're seeing that exact issue happening. And so.
Where are we?
We're, we're looking, we're, we're looking at right now is an addition, right?
Yes, correct, yes.
We don't have the, we don't have any further down the road, speaking about any lot line, okay, so that's why.
We don't have anything about lot lines, I, I agree on the lot line thing, but I, I'm just. I don't know, there's, there's, there's concerns over, over. With the whole lot line thing and the, the fact that we require a, like a 2.5 meter buffer on a lot line. Where they can't, I don't know.
I would, you know what? 2.5 meters is roughly 10 feet. If you go around that field, around the whole field, that's the edge row that we call. So that's the biggest part of your field, if you go down with a tractor and go all around that lot line. You lost probably 20% of your field if you added up, so that's why I think that the point is. To leave a one meter buffer would be plenty, because that would leave us 3.3 feet. Which is a row of trees basically on the lot line, which is on the fence line. 2.5 meters is 10 feet, 3 feet, it would make a difference, because. If you look at any field that have trees around the, the field, the first 20 feet of that field is. Done because the trees are sucking up all the water, so that, that's where it comes from.
Is there any way to consider that whoever's doing the clearing, that they have a discussion with their neighbor? Because I think each property is unique and individual, and in some cases. You'd want a larger buffer as opposed to maybe this tree line. If, if there's some way to kind of keep it open to neighbors having this discussion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea to put that in, I mean, if these, if, if neighborly agreements can happen, why wouldn't we encourage them? But we also know that there have been major unneighborly agreements here. And, and so.
Lack of an agreement.
Yes, yes, and, and so that's why, you know, we need to have something in there. I, I'm just trying to remember our conversation, did we discuss that if, if a survey is done? That, that a buffer will be required if, if there's no survey, but if a survey is done. A buffer may not be required.
How can you, if you don't have the survey, where do you put your buffer, you kind of.
I don't think it makes a difference, yeah, I don't think it's a difference Karma, that if you have a survey, you mean.
Well, in, in some cases, a, a survey will be required.
Well, in some cases, it should be required.
Right.
The cutting is often, you know, over that property line and, you know, cutting into the neighbors.
Sorry, guys, 2.5 meters is not even eight feet, it's 7.75 feet. If you go less than that.
Yeah.
You're gonna have cultivation right up to any trees that are left, which is potentially gonna kill any roots, which is potentially gonna kill those trees.
What's your suggestion?
Well, you gotta have something you need at least, I mean, you gotta have at least two meters, I mean, two meters is.
Minimum?
Yeah, just over six feet. You'd be, you'd be. retain some trees that aren't gonna get killed off by cultivation.
But if, what, what, what about the neighbor who doesn't like to. You know, the neighbor that is complaining about the guy going right up to the fence line? Why does he plant trees on the other side of the fence and get the buffer there?
Because it's not his problem.
A miniscule lot, it might be, gonna, they're gonna grow into a septic system or they're, you know.
We do have a, a thing here, a 15 meters of an existing, existing dwelling, like. Home lots and stuff is different than just having two fields side by side.
15 meters from a house is not a lot.
No. I like Mike's comment about the two meters, I think that's important, and I agree with Karma, there should be something there, so. That would be, I would agree with the two meter buffer along the surveyed property line.
Is everyone else in agreement with that?
If there's an agreement between neighbors and the neighbor who's, who's not clearing says, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, go right up to it.
Yeah.
Well, there's an exception there.
Yeah. Except when neighbors agree on something else.
Yes.
Can you, can you read that again, the, the suggest, the suggested?
Okay, harvest trees within 2.5 meters of a lot line, a survey is required if a landowner wants to clear any lands within five meters of a lot line. The person wanting to clear must pay for the survey.
So we're suggesting changing it to two meters.
So, okay, if you're okay with your plan to clear within two meters of a lot line, is that it?
Yeah, and not less than that with the exception of neighbors agreeing to something outside of this suggestion or whatever. Private neighbor agreement.
Well, even that, that's tough, because then you got one neighbor kind of forcing the other to do it. Or you've got the neighbor that's gonna sell the land in a year. Subjected, not the person.
If there's a disagreement between neighbors, then should we be requiring a survey?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, so if there's mutual agreement, fine, if there's a disagreement, cost is to be borne by the, the individual clearing.
Correct.
Agreed.
You, you need to rewrite, Kasia, harvest trees within two meters of a lot line, not 2.5? Because then it kind of looks funny at the end.
Okay, a survey is required if the landlord wants to clear any land within two meters of our outline, and the person wanting to clear must pay for the survey.
Disagreement.
Unless, yeah, unless.
Unless agreed by the neighbors.
Unless, uh. Yeah, something.
Unless agreed upon by the neighbors or adjacent neighbors. Unless agreed upon by the neighbors or adjacent neighbors.
I don't know, what would you say?
We can we also.
Mayor disappeared again.
Mine is here. Go ahead, can I can I make a comment? Um, there was a comment made by, I think it was McCannons that made the comment about about boundary tree rules. And that clear cutters need to be informed of boundary tree rules. Um, so I, I think we should, I think we should add that in there as as well into that section or whatever that. Um. That clear cutters are responsible or or need to be aware of boundary tree rules. Because there it's it's all set out in in uh. Ontario legis in Ontario legislation.
Yes?
Yes, boundary trees.
Okay, so that's already in there. So can we can we write according according or guidelines to be followed by the provincial guideline, whatever? Add something like that?
Well, then we're gonna need another definition if we're putting something like that in. It needs to go in a definition as well.
Maybe there's already something in the provincial guidelines that they can't even cut to the.
In the Ontario Forestry Act.
So it says here, it says. Uh, even if the majority of the tree's trunk grows on one side, uh it is still a shared tree and therefore common property.
Right, but we're talking about two but two meters anyways, so. Um, I I just, can we not go back to what Michael Madden, uh the Council Madden proposed?
That's okay. We have it.
Agreed.
Where's that?
The two.
Right there, harvest trees within two meters of a lot.
Two meters and that you require a survey if uh you cannot come up with a uh with uh an agreement with your neighbor.
A written written agreement?
Yeah, a written agreement.
Yep.
Okay, a written agreement with the neighbor, unless.
Agree with that?
On lot lines and boundary trees because they might come down to one tree.
And.
And just so delete that, add clear cutters or.
Yeah.
We don't.
That is okay, so I can read it out loud again.
Okay.
So harvest trees within two meters of our outline, a survey is required if a landowner wants to clear any land within two meters of our outline, the person wanting to clear. Clear you must pay for the survey unless there is a written agreement with the neighbors. I mean, the final wording can be made more formal, but.
Yeah, that's it. Sounds good.
Good. And that's a new one, is that right?
Yeah, that's an addition, yes.
So that will replace four C.
Right.
Right.
Replacing four C, okay, replacing four C.
And have we talked to the roads guys about keeping those boundaries in on the roads?
Okay, mute mute Brenda.
What do you mean?
Okay, four D, four D, we're up to four D now.
Would no, but Brenda, what do you mean?
Uh, what's your comment Brenda?
Well, I'm just, you know, it's nice that we wanna say get rid of it, but, you know, has the count, because of what they do in Ottawa, have the county guys. And even our roads guys comment on whether. Because obviously I know from driving thirty four, you can tell where there are trees and where are not trees, that makes a big difference in. Plowing, whether you have trees right up to mine, so yes, this is the way they've done it for years. But as Karma commented, you know, could we not learn a new trick and keep maybe not two point five meters, but. Keep some trees against each fence road.
And this is this, this is, you know, the us asking them to do this on.
Yeah.
On their land, we have, we have significant amount of land coming through with the ditches that belong to us.
Yeah.
I I just, again, the counties have been looking and trying to work with farmers to keep up. Uh, cornrows, paying them, uh that's, I think, what we need to start to work with with the uh the GFA, I think. Uh.
Right, we only grow corn once every couple of years.
Doesn't matter, it's not, it's not our responsibility to keep our road off.
Right, um.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thanks. Um, I mean, you 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 make a valid point, Brenda, um, but I think what the the GFA has asked of us is. Look, we can find that they're they're willing to come to the table to talk about. Other ways of managing. These already dangerous situations, right? It's already that way, so so if they're gonna commit to come to the table and help provide solutions. To 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 avoid all of this snow clear um blowing. Issues, then then that's a win-win. If 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 talks break down and there's no will to be helpful on a serious um. Safety issue, we can add it and back into the bylaw.
That's right. Yeah, okay, anyone to go with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then we can move on. Uh, this one actually jumps back to four point three, so uh the distance of five meters. The comments, the distance of five meters is insufficient to protect PSWs. And water courses, it is suggested that wording of. Be changed to address navigable waterways, which are federal jurisdiction. And PSWs, this would allow for the recommended minimum of thirty meters that is recognized. As best practice in the majority of North America, so this is a conservation authority comment. Uh, conservation buffers such as these protect soil, improve air water quality. Enhance fish wildlife habitat, conserve biodiversity and beautify the landscape. Water courses could then be a sub paragraph and would cover all the other aspects with a buffer. Of eight meters, a suggestion here, this would allow for wildlife corridors, although very small, to be somewhat maintained. Comments from council?
I think have we not already finished four point three with that with that, yeah?
Okay, we're done, okay, um, just to see. Um, all right, so.
But 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 hang on a second, uh. If if we haven't reviewed, I mean, I think that comment is. We've already decided when that's not where this bylaws going, but if there are other comments, I'd like to see them.
Sure, so anything, any comments to what I just read in terms of?
No, not our, not a jury thing to provide the wildlife.
Right, so is the conservation authority to have this thirty meter setback, which is recognized as we said, so I agree. Um, and next comment, uh is the intent of the bylaw to prohibit clear cutting adjacent. To a PSW while permitting it within the wetland?
It doesn't apply because in the in the application, you need to uh. You need to uh advise the conservation authorities uh. Of where you wanna dig and if they're opposed it, they they have the legislature to or bylaws to protect wetlands, so.
Yes, the conservation authority will will be commenting if necessary.
I don't think the government will let anybody cut trees in the wetland, I don't think there's.
Okay, next comment, uh the scientific literature has examined the minimum width to achieve specific buffer functions. Ecological buffer guidelines reviewed by Beacon Environmental two thousand twelve in Ontario come on recommended minimum. With for a water course in both literature and practices thirty meters, so again, same kind of comment.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
We don't need.
Next comment, it is a direct violation of a provincial act since a farmer is allowed to maintain his or her drainage. In Ontario, so I think this one's referring to the municipal drainage and the municipal drains and private drains are exempt.
Yeah.
Okay, next point, comment, it's uh it states that no tree shall be harvested within five meters of a water course. Exemption for drainage, okay, same comment.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have addressed that, okay, moving forward. Uh, can you please clarify the five meter setback, where it comes from? Or the rationale for the setback? Again, typically, there is no site alteration within thirty meters of a water course, PSW and C, so. Very similar type of comment, this one is from the RRCA. Uh, they were just very curious how we came upon the five meters.
And how did we?
Just consensus speaking, talking. It was.
Better make sure that five meters isn't contributing other other, any other provincial legislation. Yeah, that applies to ANC's provincially significant wetlands, wetlands, et cetera.
Yes, that's all, that's why I wonder special features, we will be seeking um conservation authority comments.
Um, a question there, Casha, does the um, do the regulations? That the conservation authorities have to abide by supersede? Um, the our 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 five meter buffer distance?
Um, I'm not certain of this, uh I don't think so, but I can find out, uh.
Well, it it might be, it might be worthwhile finding out because if those regulations supersede. Ours, then by, you know, we may be, uh it, you know, our five meter. Arbitrary buffer may be meaningless. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so why don't we uh we check that out and we'll uh and you can report back to us on that?
Okay, I'm just taking notes, so it's done, all right.
Could we add a point that the at the beginning of the bylaw that? Any provincial legislations or whatever does uh overrule this bylaw? Like or like something like that that we get covered, you know what I mean?
Or this bylaw doesn't supersede any legislation, something like this.
Very well.
Okay. Do we agree on that?
Yeah, well, yes, but we but we need to find out, um, if if we're being specific on a buffer. You know, whether it's even applicable or not.
Definitely, I've taken notes and I will, okay, so yeah, we searched the thirty meter, is that superseding to this bylaw and then. Do we wanna add the clause saying that other provincial and act law does not uh is not superseded by this bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just gonna take note, add clause, other per. So, okay, other provincial legislation supersedes this bylaw. Okay, then, next comment, uh if trees cannot be harvested or removed within five meters from a water course. How will this water course be maintained? Dead trees removed, beaver dams removed, salt buildup, et cetera. What is going to be defined as a water course ditch, creek, river, uh private ditch or landowner dug. By farmer? Okay, the tile drainage must have outlets and the outlets must be maintained usually by the farmer or landowner, except on very large outlets. Such as the Lale or Regal River.
That's where you get the confusion between clear cutting and maintain maintenance and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're absolutely allowed to maintain your tiles and your whatever.
So maybe you can add some more language.
Yes. But it's it's a good question, like who who maintains along the edge of the Delil River, for example?
The conservation authority, I I would imagine they're responsible, they regulate the water courses.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I think the the Lale and if I'm not mistaken, the Delil or Regal or whatever. We have property along there or whatever, and I'm pretty sure that was. It was dredged a while back or whatever, and that that was added to the property taxes. Just as a, just as a municipal drain would be done. I'm not, I'm not sure who did the work, but I'm pretty sure that it was.
But again, that's where the municipal drain map will come in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so any comments on this one, any changes?
Well.
No.
So.
Address elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay, so so we won't address it, then it doesn't need to be addressed in here? No, I don't think so. I think we've talked about drains and private drains already.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, so then we can move on, uh here we're again back to four point four. So I want to read the policy, but I will read the comments. So the comments is, or the distance should be adjusted as follows for policy C. Uh, so harvest trees within two point five meters, they suggest eight meters instead? For D?
We've already made.
And two, yeah, we changed it to two.
Two, I know, I know, so uh we can move forward then?
Yes.
Okay.
What else is in there, though?
Well, yeah, no, no, we need to look at them.
Okay. All right, so D is thirty meters instead of fifteen meters, harvest trees within fifteen meters, they're suggesting thirty meters.
Right, and we didn't talk about D yet.
Yeah, we haven't got to that one yet, so.
Any any comments for D, the thirty meters instead of fifteen? No? Okay.
That's that's, you know, you gotta keep in mind that when we do sever uh. Uh, excess, you know, house with a that's not necessary to the, you know, when we do cut up these two, three acres. Uh, within a hundred acre block. Or sometimes will be, even the lot line will be closer than fifteen meters.
Well, I I think that we we discussed this the other day, that most, most houses are within the middle of the property anyways. Uh, so fifteen meters uh appeared to be a number that we could live with.
Yeah, but but that, but. But there's a. When you do a severance, right? You set up to that, that was something, be something that we have to discuss with the. Like with Cash and whatever and with the. The counties or whatever, because you you will want to make sure that you maintain that, that fifteen meters. So if the lot needs to be a little bit bigger to maintain that fifteen meters to the to the property line, then maybe we we need to do that.
But if it's, it's already pre-existing and that's what's gonna happen, it's already gonna be pre-existing.
It's not to the lot line, it's to the dwelling itself.
That's right, so if we look at this as a worst case scenario, say there's an existing house that's. Two feet from the property line, which I don't think would happen, but worst case scenario. You're gonna be another forty four and a half feet away from that with a pile. That's fifteen meters is forty six and a half feet.
Yeah.
And there's existing setbacks in the zoning bylaw anyways, which are at least fifteen meters for all and all.
I I think we're, I think we're taken care of here.
Yeah.
Okay, then, I think you, uh E, so create wood piles or piles of any other harvested material within thirty meters and they are suggesting fifty meters. Of a lot line.
Who suggests that? What is our, what is our burn permit regulation on that? Like the the burn, the burn piles have to be so much the from a lot line, what is the, you remember what it is?
It's already covered in our burn bylaw.
Okay, so.
So is that, you have to say where you're putting it, so, okay, so that's covered, so we can think that.
Well, the wood piles.
The wood piles. Talking about stones there too, are we not?
Wood piles or piles of any harvested material, so yes, encompass stones, yes.
You can take out wood piles if we're not gonna talk about that, but your stones and all your other junk still has to be talked about.
Yeah, so so in E, if we, if we say, uh, any, um.
Any debris.
Any debris, and and maybe then in brackets, say wood piles, stones.
Harvested material.
Yeah. Well.
Okay, now.
Except you harvest stones?
Yep.
Yep.
Potential.
Landscapers would.
I guess. Going here, so uh Jeff, I think you were gonna say something?
Yeah, so the, I guess the problem with this is that. If you've got stones. We talked about this with with the. The Farmers Association or whatever, the the fact that if if you have an agreement with your neighbor to pile the stones. Right along the fence line, which makes sense in a lot of cases. It's been done for hundreds and hundreds of years. That 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 should be allowed, right? So again, we have to have something in there to cover that.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's similar to the, um, I think of a few. Um, sections up, we had, uh, you know, unless there's written agreement between neighbors.
Yeah, perfect.
You can just put that in there, yeah.
Oh, fifty is brutal.
Mm-hmm.
And we have thirty and they wanted nine.
Yeah.
So we have to agree on a number for anybody who will not have an agreement with their neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah. They said definitely.
Yeah, um, just one other thing with regards to E, it says that uh. Uh, can't create wood piles, um, or whatever, within thirty meters of a lot line, should it also say or. Or roadway, because we also had that situation where stones were piled. Any lot line. Any, any lot line. Would include a roadway?
Yes.
Yeah, because the lot line would be, yeah.
Okay. All right. And when they do this, they have to provide a map telling us where they're putting everything anyways.
Right, right.
A detailed sketch with the setbacks to everything and the position of the wood piles and what a clear cutting is occurring, so yes.
Okay.
So.
Are we leaving three meters?
Thirty meters.
Pardon, Jeff?
Are we leaving thirty meters?
Yes.
Yep.
GFA suggested nine meters. We've had people, other comments to say fifty meters.
And one of the comments that they had made, I have clarified that you can absolutely get rid of the stones, you can absolutely get rid of that, you talk to a quarry and they'll be happy to take it. Yes, you have to pay a fee, but you can get rid of this material, you don't have to leave it piled up on your place.
I, I think the thirty meters is acceptable because we already have that you can have a different written agreement with your neighbor, so that option is there.
I agree.
Okay, I agree, John.
Yep.
So no change therefore to E or?
Unless we take out wood, because you already talked about the burn bylaw.
Are there, are there other comments there, Kasia, with relating, relating to that, we should review them?
For E, it says, there should be also a provision that no tree cutting can be done within eight meters of a property line without the written consent of the adjacent landowner. The eight meters is the buffer zone required by organic standards in Canada. This would ensure that, that any adjacent property activity such as maple syrup would not be impinged upon by the clear cutting bylaw. Leaving a buffer zone would also protect resources of the adjacent landowner. Bush that has been opened up by clear cutting becomes very susceptible to wind damage. This would help buffer the damage to the adjacent landowners, that's the comment that falls.
So we're, we're exceeding the organic standards, that's excellent.
That's very.
I know.
Two meters.
Yeah, we moved it to two meters, we're talking about buffers. I, I think, again, we already covered this. We had decisions, so.
Okay.
Okay, so understood, from, for you, remove the words, word, wood piles, because it's addressed by the board of bylaws, is that it? Is that it?
I think you have everything over there.
Okay.
Can you turn right?
Yeah, any debris.
Yeah, create any debris piles of any kind within.
Any debris, including wood piles and stones.
Okay.
What you have, Kasia, is pretty good.
But where are you gonna put the stones from, usually they, like Jeff was saying, we.
I know, but that, that's what we're talking about, if they come up in an agreement, Jacques, with their neighbor to put it on a, a fence line, then that's acceptable, otherwise, they're gonna have to find somewhere else on their property to put it. They're either gonna bury it, or as, as Council Noble said, it, take it away.
So, so a stone fence, you can add to a stone fence, even if it's on your side. I'm just, like, the whole thing is, we're talking about people's people's land that we're telling them not to use or whatever, so that's, you know, okay.
But, but Jacques, they, they have that opportunity to, to, to put it on there. A lot, a lot of the stone fences or whatever are, are on their property to begin with, right?
Yeah, yeah, but that's it, but now they can't use it because they have to be thirty meters from it.
No, no, no. But, but if, but if they have a, but if they have a stone fence, like, we have lots of stone fences here, but, but they're in the, they're in the middle of the property, right? If you've got a hundred acres or whatever, there's a stone, there's probably a stone fence right down the middle of that.
Yeah, I know, but I have one with my neighbor right here, and it's the stone fence there, so I can't use it anymore, that's what it's saying.
Well, no, you can't share a agreement with your neighbor.
I'm doubtful that your neighbor is gonna be bothered by adding to a stone fence.
That's already there, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's okay, because it's probably never gonna happen. The, the responsible farmers, which are ninety-nine percent of them, will, will do it the right way.
That's right, absolutely. Okay.
Okay, so what I take in note is add any debris, including wood piles, stones or harvested material, unless there is a written agreement between the neighbors. Okay. All right, so that is it for that comment, and then we have a comment, harvest material permit where the rocks will be, et cetera, stone, stone fences, are stone fences exempt?
We talked about that already.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, and A, so for policy A of four point four, it says this item is a little bit ambiguous. Does this preclude selective cutting of the remaining trees in accordance with good forestry practices?
We settled that too.
That'll, yes, okay.
Previously.
Same points, comment, although we understand the intent of this point, our concern is that it will limit.
We addressed this already too. Under select.
Wonderful, next point. Uh, here, I'm just gonna strengthen it here. Okay, C, although we recognize that the right of the township is to maintain tree cover, it's the rights of the, right of the own, owner of the property, the extension of the oversight on adjacent properties is an appropriation of landowners' rights. As an alternative, a condition of approval of the permit could include the trees within the township or county right of way, not be, that, not be damaged by work conducted on the applicant's land. Okay.
What?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't understand that either.
I think what they're trying to say is that, that, that you can't, you can't damage trees on somebody else's property through your actions, and I, I, I think that's a pretty good comment to put in there.
Okay, but we've also addressed that already.
That's where we come back to the two meter that we reduced.
Yes, right.
And then the negotiation with neighbors, it's been addressed.
Well, or has it?
I think it has, but how, how do you, how do you start to, how do we start to define damage? I, I just, I, you know, I think, I think we've, we, we're putting in buffers, and those buffers i- is what we're hoping mitigates damage. If it gets damaged, then it becomes a, that, then it becomes litigation between property owners.
Property owners, okay, yeah.
So, okay, no change there. C, harvest, so sorry.
Yeah, we, we talked about that one as well, and we changed it to the two meters, and it's all property lines.
Okay, C, suggesting that there is no buffer, so zero, remove the buffer. Incentive program for creating buffers on municipal and county roads, so this one is from the GFA, so they would just like to remove this buffer.
We did that.
Okay. All right, so the next one we did too, well, maybe not, so the requirement to leave ten feet along any rural boundary could interfere with tile drainage?
One, next one, C as well.
Okay, next one as well.
Next one, C as well.
We're done to see that one.
So the only thing I wanna, I wanna double check, I wanna confirm that the lot lines, this is gonna cover the green roads as well?
It should.
Yep.
Still a lot line.
It is.
A lot line, they're gonna have to get a survey.
They wanna come within the two meters, they'll need to get a.
I, I'd like to see us add in, uh, uh, sort of a bracket saying, including roads and green roads, just, just to be clear.
Oh.
Okay. So.
Where are we? Should be just not, not roads.
Look, we took roads out.
Yeah, you can't do that. Add in, including green roads.
Green roads or abandoned roads or whatever you wanna call.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, I was thinking of something different, but yes.
The farmer can come see the.
That's under that G, Kasia.
Okay.
And, and, and remember Karma, it doesn't prevent the, the township of planting trees of even on those open fields on our side of the, in between the fence and the roadway like, like when Jamie was saying for winter mitigation, like we can plant trees there too, like we're looking.
That's true, yeah.
Yep.
On the road allowance.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just reading here, so we're still at C, it was addressed. So now, next comment. This section could also include PSW NC or any other non-sensitive features, I think we've covered this too. Now we're at D. The township must be responsible for any damages to the adjacent building if a tree falls from a property onto the adjacent property.
I think that's a whole separate issue outside this bylaw.
Yeah, that's a hard no.
Well, again, the difference between clear cutting and selective cutting. You can cut down a tree that looks like it's gonna fall down.
Yeah.
And also, if it's fifteen meters within an existing dwelling and it falls down, that's a, that's a whole other thing. That's a big tree.
Case, so we can forward, I suppose. So D is proposing seven point five meters instead of fifteen meters.
We've already decided this.
We decided, okay. D, so same thing, the, the requirement to leave fifty feet from a neighbor could, neighbor's house could mean, mean that if it is oh, sorry, if, I'm just reading this comment, it's difficult, mean that if this house is close to the property line, that the rights to possibly thirty or forty feet of the bush is being given to the house owner. Okay, I think we can move forward. So the distance of fifty meters, which is fifty feet, is too large. We addressed this, E. Due to the limited reach of excavators, attempting to achieve this condition would be a very time-consuming process and not realistic. A distance of nine meters will be more realistic for E.
Yeah.
We did it as well, okay.
Because we're saying thirty meters.
Yeah.
Yes. So then point E again, thirty meters of a lot line, is this all lines or just boundary lines? If neighbors agree, can pile be closer, so yes, council agreed that, yes, okay. Uh, E again, create wood piles within existing dwelling from adjacent dwelling, not lot line, subject to burn by law.
Yeah.
Okay, four or five.
Okay, E again. Any comments?
It's saying this requirement is not practical, we can move on, it's, we've already done that.
All right, E, this requirement, okay. Uh, so I'm just gonna scroll here. E, the thirty meters here is workable, okay, same thing. E, note, if you own the property, you should be able to pile brushwood on your own property. Your burn ban makes it very short. A very sh- short burn period with burns allowed in wet or winter months. What about stones, some places, stone fences are.
Yeah, we've covered.
Let's move to five, I think, we did everything else.
We did everything else? Okay, four point five. Okay, so this is a suggestion for a new item or addition. Harvest any tree between May fifteenth and July, June thirtieth. Addition, suggestion.
Oh, that had something to do with, with birds.
Yeah, prevent people from.
I'm sorry, I, I wanna go back to the comments, we need to, we need to go through these.
Yeah, but we, we would have saw the comments, when we were at that line, it would have been probably more helpful.
Yeah, we, we covered all the, the material, most comments.
I don't think we covered F.
Okay, F, permit applicant. From the permit notes on the application sketch where they intend to pile stones. Disposal.
We did cover that, Jamie had mentioned, they have to provide a map.
Yes.
F is about water bodies, not putting anything in a water body.
Yeah, it doesn't talk about.
Well, I talked about the plan, I thought, for disposal.
It just talks about, F just talks about water course or water body.
I know, but the only comment we have is that comment.
Yeah.
Yes, correct, for F.
What the comment, the comment addressing something that the, you know, the applicant will be having to address when they apply.
This is part of the sketch we said, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it noted on the sketch about where the disposal of stones should be?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they have to give a sketch, and don't they have to give you a, a sort of a plan?
They have to give you a plan of where everything is.
Yeah, exactly.
Is and where it's going within that two-year period.
Yeah.
Correct, yes. So then can we move on to four point five?
Okay.
Okay, so again, a suggestion, new item, harvest any tree between May fifteenth and June thirtieth.
Anybody?
No.
No.
Tough.
What happened there?
They just wanna know if, that nobody harvests between May fifteenth and June thirtieth.
Does it be no harvest?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for, I think, I think it had to do with bird nesting season.
I don't think we should.
No change?
No change.
Change.
Well, no, take that out.
No, it's not in there.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
It's, yeah.
These are proposed new items.
Your suggestions.
Correct, okay, so no change, four point five, okay. Four point six, new item suggestion. Create wood piles or piles of any harvested material within thirty meters of a lot line water course. LSW NC or county municipal road, including green roads and the road allowances.
Where, where did these new items come from, Kasia?
These are all, all suggestions from the public.
Well, we already have this in.
We already have that, exactly.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Four point seven, new item, dispose of wood piles, stones or any material on the water course. I think we have this one too, right? Okay. Uh, four point eight, uh, new item, fail to comply with an order issued under this bylaw. A and B, remove or deface any order that has been pursuant to this.
We send the suggestions of what we already have.
Okay.
Totally.
Just, just going back to four point seven for a minute. May not dispose of wood piles, stones or any material into a water course municipal drain, blah, 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 or county or municipal road.
Allowances, we've already taken care of that.
Our thing doesn't say to not dispose on the road, it just says not to create within a lot line.
Yeah.
So you could add that to dispose.
Yes.
I, I, you can, but again, I'm telling you, they need to have a.
Right, but they may as well know ahead of time.
I, I, it's good to lay it out in the bylaw. The expectation.
So we don't need a new line cache, you just need to add that to F, or on road allowances or.
Okay.
Yeah, they may not dispose of wood piles, stones or other harvested material into a water course or water body, or.
Or, or not, you know, or not within their lot line.
Or their neighbor's place, or their, yeah.
Well, and, and county and municipal roads apply as well, they can't dispose of that stuff there.
No, no, who the hell's gonna do that, so you can just write.
No, 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 we saw it, Jacques.
We, we saw it, that body person, we all know what is.
Okay, hold on, Jacques, it does happen, but I'm saying this is already in the bylaw. It's already discussed, they can't put piles anywhere like that. I, I don't know why we're, we're adding things where it doesn't need to be added.
That's what I was.
But it doesn't say that.
It doesn't.
It just says don't create it, it doesn't say don't dispose.
Thirty meters of any lot line.
Yeah.
And they have to put, they have to give us a plan. If it's not on the plan, we can make them move it.
Well, but they might as well know ahead of time.
No, I agree with Brenda, it should go in there somewhere.
It has to be within their lot line, their, their land, they cannot put it outside their land, basically, we're saying, we already. Within thirty meters of a lot line, that means that they have to put it somewhere on their land.
Right, but not within a water course on the road allowance, on the wa- blah, blah, blah.
And just to clarify, I think that Carmen, Brenda saying or create piles, which presumably means to burn, this is actually talking about disposal, which would theoretically be final.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so have we agreed on adding any word or language or words here?
No.
No.
The F, no, that's great.
No, okay.
I'm sorry, yes, we have agreed to add it, just as you had it written, but nothing more.
Okay, so add, including green roads and lo- road allowances, that's right?
Yes, any county or road or municipal road.
Green roads and road allowances.
Okay, I'll just copy this part here.
And water towers and school.
Okay, that's good.
No.
My backyard.
Or the Hope Women Road or anywhere.
At least there's the.
Hey, let's keep on moving.
Okay, four point eight, new item, addition, suggestion. Okay, four point eight, uh, new item, addition, suggestion. Uh, fail to comply with an order issued under this bylaw, A and B, remove or deface any order that has been posted pursuant to this bylaw, so is there any change in the wording suggested? Let's see.
That's four point two A and B.
Yeah, that's what we have in that in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they were suggesting in a different section, okay. Five point one, moving forward, uh, so, the current wording of the bylaw there is, every owner of the woodlands or person acting on behalf of the owner who intends to cut one hectare of that woodlands or more, uh, under the section four point one of the bylaw, shall complete and submit to the officer or designate no less than thirty days prior to the start of the harvesting, all the application information with technical agency comments, if required, as prescribed within se- schedule C of the bylaw. Along with applicable fees set out in schedule D, the information shall be submitted to the officer no later than thirty business days prior to the harvesting. And the comment is, the application and technical agency comments appear to be prescribed in schedule B.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it does, we did, we do mention, uh, no less than thirty days twice prior to the start of harvesting.
Okay, so we could remove.
I don't know what, what the others are thinking there, but, uh,
Hmm.
You know, like, we do mention thirty days, so if we mention it once, we don't need to, uh, uh, what does it say? Would land personally to another person under this bylaw, complete and submit to the officer, and there's, there's yet no less than thirty days, but then at the end of that same paragraph, we say the information helps to submit it to the officer prior, thirty days prior to, so we, we do repeat ourselves there.
We can remove the first reference and leave it at the end, so it's clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
And have we mixed up our schedules, because that's what the comment is saying, uh, that it, that it's prescribed in schedule B, not I'm not sure what that means, is it not schedule C or schedule D then, or?
Hmm, that there might be, uh.
Where, where, what's schedule B, uh? I don't know.
No, I think.
Schedule B is the application.
Saying there may be a mistake, so if, uh, Kasia, if you could check in to see if, sure that it's not in schedule B, verify, yes, please?
Yeah, taking notes to verify, okay, thank you. Uh, next comment, uh, to this policy as well. The plan must be submitted by the officer, who is the officer, is it the planning committee, or are we hiring a new person? That's a comment.
Within, it's within our planning, uh, our planning, building by law.
Definition.
We have a definition of the officers, I believe.
Yep.
So it's addressed.
Point eight. Maybe you can reference that, in the officer, according to two point eight.
Okay.
Something obviously worded better, but, so they don't have to.
As defined, winning.
Okay, good. Next point, six point one, so the current bylaw reads, before applying at the township for a permit to harvest woodlands over one hectare, applicants must contact the transportation department at the county of SDG for technical written comments, if the lands are located along a county road, as per schedule A of zoning law. And then the comment is, to happen before a survey must be completed if a landowner wants to harvest any trees within five meters of a lot line. The person wanting to do the clearing must pay for the survey, okay, we've seen this already. And the second part, a member of the local conservation authority must walk the property and file a report within the township. If a landowner.
You're applying this already by checking with, both thirty meters within the water course.
Okay.
Well, and I think what they're suggesting is, before applying, you should have your survey completed. And then, I know one of the comments from the GFA was, should the, the owner have to contact the county, or should it just be under the list of the people that we have to contact, because it won't be for every, everything? It won't be for every application, I should say. So, does the applicant still have to call the counties?
Only if it's beside a county road.
That's right, but we're doing everything else for them, so should that be one more thing that they have to, that we do it for them, so that all they have to do is apply, but this comment is saying, should you not have your survey already completed before you even start the application process?
Well, no, you're gonna, survey, surveying a lot line is, uh, as I hear it, is.
But if you don't know where you're allowed to cut, there's no point asking for your permit, which is gonna be given to you within thirty days.
I think it, there's not that many that, oh, well, I'm.
Or before applying, you either have your survey, or you have your written agreement from your neighbor that you don't need a survey.
Doesn't say anything about survey, the, the, right now. It doesn't, it doesn't ask for a survey, that's just the comment.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, but that's what the comment is, so before you apply, maybe you should already have your survey done, or have your written agreement with your neighbor, because otherwise, what's the point of starting the application process?
Deals only with the county roads, only, that's, that's all.
Number one, but number two is the same.
Yeah, yeah, number two is different, but the number one is okay. Number one is pretty much clear.
Right. But if you don't have your survey and you don't know what you're allowed to cut, there's no point in calling the counties to ask if you're allowed to cut.
We already. Yeah, but it, we already said that, I think we, there is no buffer be- be, in between the county line and your lot line, or your lot.
Yeah, we took that out.
Okay, so. I need to.
I don't know what. I wouldn't leave it just like that, that's clear to me, and I'm very confused. Really confusable, I should say.
Okay, no changes then here? Or?
Any, are you good?
And then, next comment, why do we have to contact SDG roads if the bush isn't along the road?
They don't have to.
Don't have to. I can clarify this, perhaps.
No, it says it in six one already, that they only have to call if it's on a county road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't have to be mad about it, Mike.
I'm not confused about it.
And just, I'll just jump in, Deputy Mayor, I'm gonna ask if you can, uh, take over chairing this meeting in about five minutes.
Okay, no. Or? All right. Just, Jamie, uh, Mr. Mayor, please?
Yes.
I don't know, we, uh, we got, uh, a, a long ways to go with it, and, uh, if we reconvene, uh, maybe next week sometime, and we do the second part of it, and then so.
Yes, I would, I would appreciate that as well, because I was only requesting two hours away from my job, and we're now twenty minutes over.
Yeah, and then maybe, Kasia can organize the, the, see, we're talking about six point two, we'll get all the comments when we're talking about six point two. And then, you know, get a better, uh, flow chart here, because we're going back and forth and we're confusing.
Yeah, I have a meeting at three thirty as well, so I, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay, so, uh, everyone is good with that?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes, thank.
I think our brains are all.
Yes, mine too.
Thank you, Kasia, you, you're doing a wonderful job, Kasia.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kasia.
You're welcome.
Hey. We will, uh, I will reconvene next week sometime.
Sounds good.
I'm, I'm already getting, uh, various texts from various walks of life already, so these will be lots of fun.
Are they, they're all happy, right, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they're, yeah, no. Okay, uh, moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Counselor Manley, there being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at three twenty PM, all in favor? Carrie, thank you, everyone, and, uh, I look forward to reconvening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.